Remind people of names, this is George.
Jade.
Emily.
Trish.
Alan.
You folks reiterate yourselves as well.
All staff was Scott Langford, Duncan Murray here.
And this is the pre-meeting for. We have cases reports, training. General meeting which starts at six. Approval of minutes and then. Applications from Utah extreme share. Public carries a plane and Jordan Jones landing north. Those members planning commission bylaws. Okay, who's leading the training?
I am. I'm gonna jump right in. Okay, so as you can see. Training. And as you know, that's required by law to. Public body should have this per year. And it's one of those things that's really kind of a. Constitucional thing. If you look at the US Constitution, there's the guarantee of due process and that's kind of what this is. Public has due process to be notified at the meeting and to show. How do I click for print frame just? So, an open and public meetings act, a lot of times we. For to this whole PMA and the abbreviation. So, public body, like I say. This training, so it's part of my law. It's just a good thing to know too. Like body will talk about the definition, but it's pretty much people do, a group of people doing the. The public's business. So, you know. The definition here, it's, like I said, it's state law, which requires that any meeting of a public body. Public and then all deliberations. Doesn't mean that the public can necessarily participate as far as talking and deliberating as well. Unless they're allowed by law. Which could be a. Our city code, if it requires a public hearing, then they have the ability during that public hearing to speak, right? Provide information. At a minimum, people can show up at the meeting and listen in, right? That's pretty much his presentation that he put together. But he decided, you know, hey, let's just put that up. Is even though it's not likely that anyone would ever be prosecuted for. It's good to know, right? Just what do I do to not run afoul of the law and get into trouble? But it, there's the state code section fifty-two dash four is open meetings acts. This is one of the sections within that chapter. But basically, the good thing is, is you can't be sued for money. Give some. Somebody's after somebody for money. For the most part, all it does is compels if we as a city don't do something. Properly, then. Public has the right to sue and make us do which under the law we should be doing. And they can also determine, make determination important and if we're doing something right. The limited money damages per se are if they prevail. And then there are also criminal penalties, right? That was basically civil action to enforce the law. There is a criminal. Penalty, and this is more geared towards an individual member of a public body. As opposed to the city as a whole. And technically, you can, if you knowingly or intentionally, that doesn't mean accidentally or negligently, but just know. Violate. Then technically you could be charged with a, be found guilty of a class. Rare. But it's just something. Right that we never. Or intentionally. Especially when somebody's right to listen in. So there you go. That was the bad part. Now everything else is easy to set, stuff that's. Stress you out. So official bodies of cities are put in place for. Conducting the people's business, right? I mean, if you could sum up, what is it that we do or that you do as? Member of a planning commission, a public body, what is? General sense, you're doing the people's business, right? And it's. Very defined into the specific types of land use issues you're involved with. Either recommending legislative changes to the council or acting on applications. As a final land use authority. But in one way or another, the, the specific responsibilities you have, you're conducting a portion of the people's business. For this city, right? Hence, the reason why the public can. Listen in and that they're open, obviously, for your business. Little bit why you want to be careful not talking about. Items that are on an agenda outside of this meeting is then people can't listen into that. Issue, right? It's not being conducted. So openly and, and so if somebody catches you. Whatever, then the best thing to just say is, hey, why don't you show up to the planning commission meeting on Tuesday and talk about it there? You know, might be, because I don't think the public necessarily. That's right, they just want to know, but let's be. Tell them that it all happens at the meeting, they're not likely to know. What do you think? If you ask twenty random people walking around on, say, a Jordan landing and you asked them all about the open meetings act? What pers- what number of those twenty people would even know what you're talking about?
Zero.
They don't even know what a planning commission is.
Bet you they have some notion, probably eighteen or nineteen out of twenty, that if they wanted to show up. And if they knew what the planning commission was, they probably thought, would think that they have a right to show up and listen in. So, so they kind of know that, the idea, the concept. So, public body is one of the main definitions or terms. And it's basically a four-part test to see if you're a public body. If it's created by Utah statute. If it consists two people. Support and whole or part by tax revenue. It's vested with authority. And all those things apply to you guys, right? There's those specific code sections that set up and provide for planning commissions. And you have more than two, you've got seven people completely supported by tax. So what if it's just a one-person? Appeal authority, let's say instead of a board of adjustment, we had one guy that. Woman that we sent everything to. If there was an appeal, would that person be a public body?
Because it's mandated.
That member has to meet all four of those.
That just had to be one.
Yeah, obviously. One person is not two or more, right? Yep, so it's an and and so and or, it has to be all four of those things. So, you wouldn't have to comply with the open. One of those things didn't comply. And then what is a meeting? Because you have to have an open meeting. Have to follow open meetings that requirements if you're a public body and if it's a meeting, right? So it makes sense to figure out what a meeting is. And a meeting is where you have a. Whether you're here in person or not, all those kind of things. But what? Right? It's not a chance gathering. Or a social gathering, so, you know, four of you. Happen to meet each other at the movie theater or the grocery store, whatever. You know, just, or you're all at the same party or whatever. It's, it's not a meeting, but. Beware of discussing upcoming gen items, right? If you're talking about things in general, it's not as. Probably okay. But. You have to be careful. Especially if there's a quorum, right? But I, I, the best practice is even if there's just two of you. Outside of the main meeting. Probably not talking about it, but especially if there's a quorum. Because somebody could argue that. In the process of making a decision outside of the process where people see. And then notices. Because do. People have this right to due process is fair notice and a fair opportunity to listen and participate in the meeting. You know. To work hard, right? Because you can't listen in on a meeting if you don't even know when and where it is, right? So very important. And under state law, you have to give notice at least twenty-four hours in advance. You may have to have that stuff on that agenda. Take time and place. Once a year, we put the whole schedule out there for the public, but we still put up. Notice website. Still do the old school thing. At a minimum, right? Yeah, so. Now. So there we go, yeah, states. Has anybody ever been on the state that heats up public news website? How many people in this room have done that?
It's exciting.
You can. Some favor, you gotta book.
Even if there's some remote. Every district, like I serve on the cemetery district board of trustees for a small little. District of, and it was only about twelve or. Fourteen hundred people that live in the area. There's probably a third as many people in the cemetery that are very. Another third that own lots, but. But it's, you can go on and you can, on the state notice website, and if you, if you care to know what the Warren, West Warren. Cemetery district is talking about on their agenda at the next meeting, you can go at two o'clock or whatever. Get on there and see, right? It's kind of cool. And then.
Usually a response. I posted, I, they're asked, they've got like those.
Yeah.
Libraries, the state and city websites.
And if you go through the door in the public works building, it's usually there.
Now, but it.
Probably won't continue.
Just be here.
Here in my, this is just noticing the agenda. This is not a proximity notice, so a lot of times, you'll have people come to your meeting and say, well, it wasn't notified at the meeting. They're all notified when the meeting was, what they're meaning is proximity notice is. A certain distance around property in question, and Julie sends those in.
Exact distance for those.
Three hundred feet.
Is it three hundred? Okay. Because I've heard kind of that going back and forth and. Okay.
In the law, we call that actual, right? They got an actual notice directly to them as a property. Supposed to these general notices.
And remember that notice is sent to the property. Because we've had occasion come where a renter says, well, I didn't get noticed. But the law does not require you to send an occupant of the property.
Yeah, we're going to be talking about bylaws today and next meeting, and there is, are some references. There to noticing it. But that's kind of what the state notice website. Looks like and you can hit the county and municipality, special district or whatever. Information, so. Occasionally, an issue and subject comes up and it's not on the agenda, right? Can you talk about it? What are the limitations?
You probably put it on the agenda and notice it.
Yeah, that's probably the main thing is, talk about it briefly. To figure out how it should appear on a subsequent. And stick it on a future agenda, right? So, we should always be careful to not talk about it too much, that it looks like you're gonna. Without it being formally on the agenda, right? But, I mean, you can discuss it some, right? Just can't take it. Till the future meeting. Because if somebody could argue that, well, yeah, you put it on the next meeting, but you did ninety percent of your discussion at the other meeting where I couldn't even attend, but. I still think you'd probably be fine because it's in the minutes, right? It's or something, but still something to be careful. You can have emergency hearings. Why would you ever need an emergency meeting? Like St. George and the. River overflow. Wiped out a bunch of things and you needed to take some kind of land use action, maybe, I don't know. I've been here close to. I've been here. Six years, but I haven't seen the need for one ever, but in theory it could happen, right? But then you have to do these things, right? You have to make attempt to notify all the members and give the best notice possible to the public and. Of course, we have to keep recordings of meetings. We have written minutes that Julie does. Little recording. Which one's the official record? Yeah, written minutes, although if we got litigated for something, the digital. Probably the most useful for that, but eventually the main. Yeah, and we have really big, so that's very. And what's interesting is like you look there at the bottom, that bottom. Bullet point there, name of each person. Is legally sufficient, right? They just Bob Smith, Jay Doe, whoever spoke. But ours are way better because Julie. You know, some issue, at least it's a sentence or so. Saying it's really good. So, but those are the basic minimums that you need in your minutes. And we have to keep both at any rate, right? Of all open meetings. It should be complete and unedited. You know, that's the tough thing about, you know, it, it happens to all of us eventually sometime. Times, maybe if you're. But there's those moments that for whatever reason you ate something wrong at breakfast or whatever, you weren't paying attention. But something unforeseen and weird and dumb comes out of your mouth, right? And, and unfortunately, you can't go back and like just blip out that five seconds of. Of being, you know. It, it's there forever, right? It's just there and it, and it stinks, but that's just part of. Yeah, and then maybe that should be one of the questions, though, when somebody wants to be appointed the planning commission. Hey, do you realize when you say that dumb thing, it's going to stay, you know? I don't know, maybe that should be something we should be forewarned, but now you're forewarned if, if you weren't before. There's no way to get rid of it, it's just there. So, now fortunately, Julie probably won't put. Mr. So-and-so made the following dumb statement. And chances are she'll just like summarize it so no one, unless they listen to the audio recording, but every now, but just saying, right?
Don't burn Julie, because.
Um, yes, like we said, the official written record, official record is the met, that's right. And then we have closed meetings. Does everybody know what a closed meeting is? Sometimes we call it an executive session. Have a closed session once. Goes up in a small town up to the north. The city council really needed to have a closed session about a piece of property that was really important to the city. There was possible litigation, there was discussion the council's going to have on purchase price, all kinds of things. But there's always also a land use component to it, and they really wanted to know. Any commission thought about this piece of property in a land use context, it wasn't an actual application, but. And so, at, at the request of the council, planning commission. Didn't take long, discussed that. So came back into the main meeting and made a motion. In a way that didn't give up anything confidential, but gave the council some direction. And, and it's, it was kind of weird, but it worked and it was the right thing to do, but it was such a weird fact pattern, I don't even think that would happen again, I don't know. Maybe some people, Larry, have you ever seen one? And none of these apply, like Larry was saying, where a meeting, don't apply the planning commission. Those specific purposes where somebody would have to close a meeting. And even the ones that are discretionary really don't apply either. Because you don't hire and fire people. Marketing and strategy sessions for litigation or any of the rest of it, right? You're not deploying security. Personnel items. So, yeah, it's just good stuff to know that. You, but state law says I have to tell you about it. Just more in the context of a city council. If they're considering an ordinance resolution, any of those main legislative type things. Approving a marital appointment or whatever. They can't do that in a closed session, right? It's got to be. Yeah, so and then when they go into the closed session, they give the reason for it and. There's. Either some minutes or whatever, depending on the time of the closed session, the document, what closed session. At the end, any questions?
How often does the state legislature? Play with this? I know it's up right now, but I think it's primarily about golf courses, is what they're talking about in the current session. But often we see this pop up.
You mean?
At the open and public meetings.
Where they revamp it a little, make changes to it. Not near as frequently as like the. Land use development management act changes like every year. Open change is probably. Every three, four years maybe. Not near as often, and I think most of the changes have been not really changes as much as clarifications. So. Oh, and if you've got like six minutes of time and you have no idea what to do. You can always get on the state website and look at the open public meetings. Good bit to, to look at that, but technically this meets the statutes or. Any other?
Question, but maybe a comment that might be a little bit illustrative. I was fairly new on the planning commission, we had a meeting and I can't remember if it was in this building or the other building. We had a meeting and we. Had a negative vote on the application. And soon after that, the meeting was adjourned and we all were heading out. The applicant caught me just out. This thing approved. Should I have said? I need to do that business at a public meeting.
Right, right, yeah.
I assume that was the practice.
Because that, yeah, that way they still get.
I guess I'm sharing that to illustrate that. It doesn't happen anywhere.
Right. That's staff's job, right? And then that's not happening. They're not asking, you're not giving an answer. Where you're part of a public body in St. Larry or somebody isn't, he does not help with those same restrictions, that same context. But dealing with the issue you're talking about, as we get to bylaws later in today's meeting or next meeting. Then that's something that we're going to look at a little more is changes regarding tie votes.
Are we ready, Julie? Okay, it's six o'clock. Time for this meeting to begin. This is the planning commission meeting. For February twentieth, all commissioners are present. First item on the agenda is minutes from January second meeting. Mister Thomas.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes.
Mister Allen.
I'll second.
All in favor? That appears to be unanimous. Um, item number two, public hearings with final action by the planning commission. Uh, Utah Extreme Chair eight two two four Industry Circle Suite three ten. Initial use permit for personal instruction services M one zone, K and M. Who's Yataki Enterprises? Did I get that all right?
Yes, it's close enough. It's you taking.
Say it again.
Uh, you taking, it takes okay, and then you taking enterprises.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead and with your presentation.
Okay, so um, again, my name is Corey Takey. Uh, my wife and I have owned Utah Extreme Chair Sandy. Uh, for fifteen years, this will be our sixth season. Looking at moving to West Jordan for our next home. Um, and we found this building in West Jordan on Industry Circle. Um, that kind of fits the needs of what we're doing for continuing our instruction for, for truly and competitive in the competitive realm. So. So yeah, that's kind of it. It's a beautiful building and definitely an upgrade for what we're looking for.
Is that it?
I, that, that's it.
Okay, we'll have you back up with later if we have more questions. Thank you. Uh, Megan.
Yes, thank you. Okay, so this is um, just a conditional use permit. So the site is here, uh, just west of the sports complex. It's in a manufacturing zone. It's just kind of a warehouse building and they'll just be in one tenant space in the building. So like he said, it will just be coaching of competitive cheerleading, kind of like a gymnastics studio use. The hours of operation are going to be Monday through Thursday from around three P M to ten P M. Um, the customers or the patrons will be coming around four thirty. Um, traffic and parking volume. So there will be nine employees and then about twenty five to sixty customers per hour. So staff was mainly looking at parking and traffic for this type of use and its impact. So they have uh given us this traffic plan. And people will come in, there's a north access and a south one. So they'll come in from the north and then down, and then they have a. A drop off and pickup location in front of their space and then just exit through the south. And it is a cul-de-sac, so we don't anticipate it will have huge effects on traffic. Um, and then up and then out on Welby Park Drive or eighty two hundred south. And they will also have a person directing traffic at the north and south entrance. And that is our one condition we're recommending. It is to follow the traffic control plan and then the first two weeks of. Every new cycle of classes when new parents or people are coming. To have the directors there until people kind of learn the flow. Um, and they have a great to do that and. That is just the floor plan, but that is all I have. If you have any questions.
Seeing no questions, we'll proceed to public hearing. This item has noticed for public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to address this issue? Anybody online? If you're online, please raise your hand so you can be recognized. Nobody online? Nobody here? Okay, then public hearing is closed. Commissioners discussion.
I, I appreciated how thorough the pack it was. Uh, I don't have any questions. If nobody else does, I'd be happy to make a motion. Do we have a motion available upon the screen or I just steal this?
Mister Allen?
All right. Uh, based on the information of finding set forth in the staff report and upon the evidence and explanation received today, I move that the planning commission approved the conditional use permit for Utah Extreme Chair located at eighty two twenty four South Industry Circle in an M one zone with the conditions that are supported by substantial evidence. As described in the analysis of section four of the staff report. Uh, the conditions are imposed to mitigate the reasonably anticipated detrimental effects of the proposed use in this particular case traffic.
Mister Thomas.
I'd second that.
That motion by Commissioner Allen, second by Mister Thomas, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Item number three, Carol Way Retail twenty eight seventy seven west seventy under south. Eliminatory site plan and conditional use permit for two tenants restaurant fast food general location. S C two, which is community shopping center zone. Uh, the applicant is Iron Horse Real Estate Tate Baxter representing the applicant's state here. Select to step to the lectern, please.
So Tate actually is not here. My name's Wes Graham. I'm with Iron Horse. Tate couldn't make it. Uh, but I am representing the, the development company uh on this. So uh, essentially this is our, our second time presenting a. Uh, development here on this property on Carol Way and seventy hundred south. Uh, the first time was back in November, a few months back. In that meeting, a lot of uh, community concerns were brought up. And since then, we've uh, met with the, the HOA of, of Apple Cross Community, uh, and their board and community members. And uh, try to address all those concerns, uh, tackle them head on and, and see what we can do to mitigate any, any concerns or uh. Uh, issues that anyone in the, in the community may have. Uh, since then, we have come up with quite a few solutions and I want to, want to be able to present those today. I don't know. If I'm presenting those or if Taylor, if, if you would like to go through those.
Yeah, you can talk about what you've changed and what's addressed to the staff as well.
Yeah, absolutely. So like I said, we, we presented back in mid-November. Uh, for a dual drive-through. Uh, retail building here on this parcel. Uh, a big concern of the community that lives just south of the, the property, um, the Apple Cross uh HOA. A big concern for them, for, for those members, which understandably so is, is the amount of traffic that would be brought onto Carol Way. Uh, as it is right now, it's currently not the easiest of roads to, to turn on to seventy hundred south. And so that, that was a big uh concern. What we have since then, uh, with that, and one thing that we, we've addressed and, and tried to tackle head on is how can we. Maximize the amount of access that this community has uh for their neighborhood. Uh, what we did to address this, if you look there on the east side of the community, that far east cul-de-sac. Uh, that road is called Dorney Lane. I'm not sure. There, oh, there we go. Okay, so that far east uh lane, a- as of right now, the way it's set up is Carol Way is the only point of access for that neighborhood there. Uh, what we've done, the, the owner of that, that access point on Dorney Lane is actually the owner of the Cal Ranch. Development there. And so we reached out to Cal Ranch, we reached out to the ownership of that group and asked them if, if they'd be willing to allow the community to open up that. Currently, there's some bollards, there's some, some barricades preventing anyone from the community from uh. Going towards seventy hundred south or from seventy hundred south into the community. Um, so we've asked them if we can uh remove those, those bollards and barricades, which uh the owners have agreed to, Cal Ranch. Uh, allowing us to open up that, that point of access for anyone within the neighborhood. What this does is essentially. Double the amount of, of potential access on the seventy hundred south for these community members. Uh, which we feel like help will definitely help alleviate any traffic concerns uh. For those, those uh residential homeowners there. So that, that alone was, I would say was, was the biggest concern uh for the community members. I don't want to put words in their mouth, but that, that, if you recall those that were here. Um, that was, that was the large concern was how, how can we mitigate some of the traffic concerns? Uh, so like I said, we've since. Uh, been able to get the permission to open up those, those bollards and open up uh. Dorney Lane for those residents. Another concern that was brought up is this being potentially a fast food or a, a quick service uh restaurant. The, the. Potential smells or, or uh issues with the dumpster being close by to the homes. Uh, what we have agreed to do there is uh. Build our walls for our dumpster enclosure uh to be significantly higher than we typically would. Uh, and to make sure that there's an enclosure that that's fully enclosed with four walls rather than the typical three walls. We'll have some type of gate there. Uh, and make sure it has a lid uh as to potentially mitigate any potential uh smells that, that could head down south. Um, another issue was potentially for those homes, especially for the homes directly south of the property that, that are adjacent to the property there. Uh, a big concern which I understand is, is the amount of light pollution, more specifically from cars entering and exiting. The property. Um, there's a concern that there's, there would be some light pollution. What we've done is we've changed our, our lighting plan for the. The development to make sure that no lights are, are facing east, or sorry, not east, facing south at all. All will be facing north towards the building. And we're also going to on that, that south property line, we will plant hedges. Um, that will be at least headlight height as to, to be able to mitigate any. Any uh light pollution hitting the homes there, those, especially those three or four homes there, uh, just adjacent to the property. And lastly, one other thing that we've uh agreed to do uh in our discussions with the community members is. Install new signage. At the entrances and exits on both Dorney Lane and Carol Way, uh stating to the effect that there is no outlet, no, no uh. No through roads that, that it is a, a dead end, that there is nowhere to go through this neighborhood. And so we will make sure that that is clear so that as customers of the retail uh tenants exit onto Carol Way. That it'll be made clear that there is no left turn. There, there's no, no outlet for them if they turn left into the neighborhood. Uh, which will then encourage them to just turn right and go back on, onto seventy hundred south. So we will make that clear. We'll, we'll take care of the, the installation and payment of those signs. Uh, we just want to make sure it's clear that customer should not be going south into the neighborhood. So with these uh. Few solutions that we've, we've been able to discuss with the HOA board and, and uh. Come to a conclusion on, we feel like we are now ready to re-present. And although maybe not all concerns are addressed, we feel like we have addressed the main major concerns that, that affected this uh property. The last one back in November.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
I have a question. I have a question for the applicant. Sorry. Um, have you discussed with Cal Ranch who will be maintaining um the length, the, the road they're opening up? Is that going to be an HOA? Maintenance or the owner?
Yeah, we're, thanks for that question. I'm glad you brought that up. We actually, we've been discussing with them right now, the bollards are, excuse me, on the, on the property line. So everything south of the bollards has been taken care of by the HOA of the Apple Cross uh HOA. Everything north of the bollards has been taken care of by uh Cal Ranch and it's going to remain the same. There, there's a, a clear property line there, clear, clear delineation. Um, and we're currently communicating with Cal Ranch right now, but there already is a public uh access easement on that section. Uh, so the public, anyone can access there be more so. I think they did that when Arby's was, was put there that the Arby's customers can access that as well as the. Gate care center across the street. And so there's already a public access agreement there. Uh, we'll just make sure that we're, we're, we've got that legally.
And then Carol Way, you're working with the HOA to maintain that street there.
Yeah, so on Carol Way, so we technically, we are, our retail development will be part of the HOA. Um, so we absolutely will be paying uh what our shares, it's clearly stated in HOA documents and the C C N R's. What our portion of that maintenance is and we will absolutely pay that.
Thank you. That is perfect.
Yeah. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Now Taylor. Great, thank you, Chair. I think Wes touched on a lot of it, so I'm just going to touch on a couple of things that he didn't get to. First is why is this coming back? We just saw it in November. Um, and the reason is we didn't technically take action on November fourteenth. The motion to approve failed and the motion to deny never got a second. So this was just looming business. So that gives the applicant a chance to rework some things as you've heard and to come back. And so that's why we're not having an appeal process. It's because we didn't finish our action on the fourteen. One thing I think the heat didn't talk about, but was a source of confusion at the last meeting. I just wanted to make sure that we discussed it as well because we have thought about this, how the traffic engineer look at it. It's how the traffic works with the two drivethrus because that is confusing for everyone, including myself. So here we can see this blue line. That's where access will come in. Continues all the way around. So you can go all the way around the building, exit on the um, the west side there. Purple is the stacking lane number one, so you'll give them that stacking lane, get your order and then join the execute. And there's the orange stacking queue. When you're done. There, you join back into the execute. So there's kind of one way around the building and the two stacking queues will merge into that. So that's kind of how the traffic would work. Uh, here's the updated landscape plan that the applicant talked about. We can just see uh. Where we have parking stalls next to that south property line. They're showing that hedgerow. It's also important to remember that there's that landscaped. Gap between them and the Apple Cross subdivision with the six foot wall. Those will remain as well. Buffer another. Another gap. Um, and then we can see where the dumpster location is um, just here. Moving on, uh, we identified the last time we brought this forward, three detrimental effects. And so we have proposed negotiations for those as well. Uh, the first was access to the lot due to proximity of the intersection of Carol Way and seventy eight hundred south. Uh, we can't get access on to seventy eight hundred south from Utah. So is what we're doing is we're pushing that access to this lot. As far to the south on Carol Way as we can before getting to that buffer. Uh, the second one is there was undue burden identified on residents of Apple Cross as they only have a single access to the neighborhood. Opening of Dorney Lane uh should provide a second access that should uh address that undue burden. And the third was undue burden of headlights and smells. And as we've heard, they've talked about the headlight screen of shrubs and the additional masonry dumpster enclosure and coverings. Uh, one thing that. Isn't in the conditions of approval or even in the staff report, but you probably saw the memo from our city traffic engineer. Who went and took a look at this as well. One thing that he will require through the approval process is just the striping on Carol Way to be repainted. It is a three lane currently, but the, the lines are really faded. So he will also require that that be repainted as this project come through if it's approved. On that, staff does recommend approval with the conditions that were listed in the staff report. Uh, so there's five there for the conditional use permit and then three requirements of approval with the site plan. With that staff happy. Any questions account, uh, the commission may have.
Mister Thomas?
I just have one question and that's going back to the flow of the traffic for the um, building itself. Does staff feel pretty comfortable that that will meet all the requirements and? Cause when I was going through the whole thing, even with the traffic engineer and all that, I was confused. So you guys felt pretty comfortable that that will mitigate any. So you guys feel pretty comfortable that that will mitigate any problems that way?
We do. I, I think the traffic engineer looked at it. Most of the, the new trips that are going to be generated are going to be passed by trips, people coming and seeing this and pulling in, especially traffic in the AM peak going eastbound. We don't see a lot of trip generation for people going westbound just because it's so hard to make that left turn across seventy-eight hundred. So with that, the traffic engineer was pretty confident that this would be okay.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Allen?
On the striping along Carroll Way, that being a private road, I know we can make that a condition at this point in time. How do we ensure that that striping remains active? Or once we've made this determination, it's just up to the HOA to stay, to keep it?
Yeah, that maintenance would be on the HOA to maintain. I think it's in their interest to keep that up.
Commissioner Hatch?
I'll go ahead and make a motion unless there's other discussion.
We have to have a.
Oh, sorry, I'm a little ahead of myself. My apologies.
Commissioner Hollingsworth?
Yeah, just a point of clarification on the staff report on the regular requirement three and on the category D. It's mentioning lighting effects all the way out to fifty-six hundred west. I don't think they're going to be using that intensive lighting, right?
That's correct. That was, that was a mistake that I made in November and I forgot to correct it.
Okay.
And from our previous meeting, we know that that mistake is now recorded forever.
I, I know Julie actually mentioned it to me right after this got published, so.
Okay, any other questions? Todd Johnson?
Yeah, they, they won't give me my own microphone, so I have to use Todd's. Just to clarify, the requirements for the ballards were required at the time for a fire code issue. Development can't have any more than thirty lots on a single entrance. And so in order for Apple Cross to have more lots than thirty, they had to have the second access there. But I was willing to accept a limited access gate. That's where the ballards come from. For, if, for, in my opinion, as a fire marshal, I'm perfectly fine to have ballards taken out during the winter. The snow gets pushed up against them, so it's not a second act egress anyway. So, but I'm, I personally, I'm glad to see the ballards are, are to be removed. So there.
Thank you. Commissioner Allen?
I've got a follow-up question on that then, so two actually. So first one, I just love hearing from Paul. So first question is, since you recall the ballards and, and them going in along that line, do you recall why it wasn't made a secondary access to begin with?
It was just part of the review, review process. Apple Cross didn't want to have people coming in and out of the subdivision that way. And so it was a way to allow Apple Cross to have a, a single access, but still meet the fire code.
Okay. And if we ever do actually get snow again, are we going to run into a situation where Apple Cross might be pushing snow out into Cal or vice versa that we might have a concern with?
That, that may be something, I didn't even think about that until he was discussing the, the delineation between the two properties. That will probably have to be worked out between the HOA and the, the owner of Cal Ranch to figure out where to dump that snow at. Hopefully not in front of the daycare.
Kids would have fun with a good sled hump.
Oh, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? This item is noticed for a public hearing. So public hearing is now open. As we do that, I want to mention that we did receive an email today from, I think it came from Julie regarding the traffic engineer. And they had reevaluated their findings and the, the bottom line of that, of their statement from the traffic engineer was that the additional traffic would have minimum conflicts between existing and proposed traffic. And many of us have subjective opinions about traffic in that area, but this is a, the, an objective statement, I think, more reliable than our subjective opinions. So I just wanted to get that on the record. With public hearing open, let me note that we did receive an email. Julie received an email from a Byron Johnson. He said he could not be here tonight, but he did, did want to comment publicly that his concern still is with traffic and parking. So we note that. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to comment? Please step to the lectern. State your name for the record and you're allowed to, three minutes to comment.
Yeah, my name is Cindy Chatwin. I live at twenty-nine eighteen West Narren Way. So I'm just at the entrance off of Carroll on, so I'm the corner house just across the street from this proposed project. You know, even though we talked about making this a right turn, taking those ballards out, every person who drives through our neighborhood is still going to cross, they're still going to go through it. They're not going to pay attention to those signs. You look at people in traffic already who cross through even like a seven-eleven or any other parking lot to avoid the traffic that's stacked up. And that will happen through our neighborhood, putting our children that run around in the neighborhood at risk, our pets that are running around. I also see a lot of people who run down seventy-eight hundred south, a lot of bicyclists. And so there's going to be a lot of cars stacked if this is truly a coffee shop every morning. And already it's impossible to get out of there. So I, I think by opening that up, you're just, you're going to allow everybody to come in and they're going to pass through our neighborhood. They'll figure it out that they can go out on the other side. So I don't think it's well planned. I had a conversation with UDOT about this project and they looked at the site plan when the project, when the neighborhood was originally built and actually said it was very poor planning altogether, the way that it is structured. They had, they were really surprised that, that they were even trying to put anything on that corner with so much traffic coming into the neighborhood on that. But that's about all I have.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Cody Jenkins. My wife Haley and I live on Narren Way. We're actually the second house right there. So our property is the one that's directly south of the proposal. I just want to say first that we are grateful to the applicant that they, you know, listened to a lot of our concerns from the first meeting, especially where we're such a, you know, close property, the stuff with the bushes and the, our disposal. We are really happy to see that. However, we don't feel that the proposal has done enough to mitigate the main problem, which is the traffic. Their only solution that seems to propose is to open up another way for people to continually drive through our, our subdivision. And like, I don't believe that those tiny little signs will work. We have a sign on my work that says, "Do not enter one way only." And I can tell you, the majority of people just drive right through there. Don't even see a small sign like that. You know, if it's morning, they're in a rush to go get their drink or whatever the sandwich, you know, shop is going to be, they're not going to pay attention to that. They're going to use whatever's the quickest way to get in and out and get on their way. So I, I'm grateful that they've made some changes, but I don't think they've done enough to fix the main issue, so thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody on, if you're online, online, raise your hand? Do you have somebody?
Court?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you, Court. Go ahead.
Perfect. Yeah, so I live in White Meyer Court, which is the middle circle. And I also just wanted to bring up the concerns of the traffic, obviously. Again, reiterating what Cindy said, the, the opening of, of the ballards just creates more potential for, for through traffic. Turning left out of Carroll Way with the placement of, of where the exit for, for this restaurant is, is proposed to be, you could optimistically fit three cars in that left-hand turn lane, which oftentimes we already exceed in the mornings between taking kids to school and people driving to work every morning. That, that left-hand turn lane fills up quite quickly. And if you're talking about something like a coffee shop or a server shop in the morning, people trying to get into that business is going to be difficult in that left-hand turn lane when you've already got people trying to turn left out of our neighborhood. I, I just don't see a way where there, there's not going to be traffic congestion on that tiny little road in and out of our neighborhood, even with opening up those, those ballards. I, I, I just don't see any way around that whatsoever. It's, it's just not really a feasible solution in my opinion. So I, I again also appreciate what the developers tried to do to mitigate other issues, but there's just no way around this issue without opening up another, another outlet from the restaurant, so.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Your name and, yeah, three minutes.
Yes, my name is Clifford Stevens. I live on Narren Way, close to where the, the ballards are. And I would comment that adding the additional ingress, egress point would be helpful, but it's not like that is unused. It's very busy with the daycare already with, with the Arby's. And also that the daycare does have the, a little circle there to pull in and drop off, but many cars actually park over into the Cal Ranch and then escort their children over to the daycare center. So they're crossing traffic. This would increase the traffic there and increase the safety risk for the children. So the traffic will be impacted. It's already difficult, so that's why the community is, would still prefer to have something that doesn't have so much traffic to come through.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else online? Raise your hand. Anybody else in the audience? Then we will consider public hearing closed. Commissioners, questions, comments?
Could we bring the applicant back up?
Mr. Graham, come back up please.
I would like to hear just two, two comments. One, the snow, which is minor, but I'm just curious, has it been looked at? The second one is, as you've spoken with the HOA and of course, having heard the same folks tonight that we've heard, what have your conversations specifically been about traffic through that aspect of it?
Yeah. The second question I'll, I'll answer first. So the, yeah, we, we have met with the HOA board multiple times and discussed, you know, what can we do to prevent cars from entering the neighborhood? We even at one point brought up the idea of installing gates, making it a gated community where we were, would put up the cost to, to install those gates and, and get those put in. We actually went down this, this road for a little while before it was ultimately decided that gates probably opened up more issues than they solved, that they weren't quite desired. So that was one, one thing we were looking into and willing to do. But, but to answer the, the question on how to prevent, you know, putting our heads together with the HOA board, the, the only solution we could reasonably think of was signage, just making it as clear as day that, that there really is no outlet through this neighborhood there. By, by turning into this neighborhood, you're not going to get anywhere that you couldn't just by turning onto, right onto Carroll. I do understand not everybody reads signs or obeys signs rather. That's, that's definitely something we, we recognize, but we are willing to, to put in as much signage as necessary to make it as clear as day that, that there really should be no one other than residents entering the south. Now, your first question, I, what, remind me your first question?
Snow removal there, it's the inner back.
Yeah, that's, that's actually a great point. I made it note here to, to make sure we address that. Yeah, as it is right now, if you look on Dorney Lane, right where that lower arrow pointing down is that red arrow, that's about where the property line is. And you can even see the different colors of, of asphalt there. That, that's where that property line is. We'll just have to make it clear with, with whoever's doing snow removal to, to push it up against, you know, either side, but not to block it. And we'll have to get with Cal Ranch and make sure that, that there's an understanding with whoever does their snow removal as well. Maybe if we're lucky, we could even get the same group to, to do both and, and really make it, you know, clean and easy. But that's something we're willing to look into. Absolutely. Any other questions?
Mr. Allen?
So I, I, I was on the note crew last go around. And so I've appreciated quite a few things. One, how the applicant has come forward looking for solutions, how the HOA has engaged in those solutions. I did read through the traffic study and understand it well enough. I have some very nuanced questions, but nothing that's going to impact how it's reviewed. I appreciate that staff went through and did counts on the, the specific day, February ninth. They have the counts, the information's in here. I drive by here every day. I've had an opportunity over the last several months to keep an eye on it roughly the same time. And I think, at least I am at a point where based on all of that and noting that the subdivision plan was initially set up for this to be a commercial area and there being no other alternatives as far as a second e-exit office, sending it into south, working with UDOT. I, I think this is the best case scenario right now for the community. I think they've got an extremely willing partner on board. And I think above all else, that the applicant has done their due diligence and shown that this is viable. And so with that, I, I would make a recommendation or I, I, what do we call those? Proposal motion? I could make a motion unless if people want to talk.
Commissioner Hatch?
I also agree with Commissioner Allen and want to thank the applicant. I think this is a tough, tough spot to develop. But being that it was noted originally as commercial use and I really appreciate the applicant has gone the extra effort to answer our questions and work with the community. I think I mentioned before that I live in a community of thirty-two homes and it's also an HOA. And it, it's challenging to make things work when you were dealing with an HOA and commercial development. And I really appreciate that everyone has worked together as well as they have. And I really like what you have into that.
Commissioner Thomas?
I just want to make a, a statement and this is to the general public. This was already designated as a commercial area. And our job, I just try and clarify, our job here is to make sure that we can mitigate whatever we can. But with the applicant kind of going, just like what Commissioner Allen said, the extra way and stuff, we have to really look at every aspect of this and make sure that, A, they are doing what is zoned for and it meets the intent of what it was already originally. We're not asking for a rezone or anything like that. That we do appreciate all of the comments that are made previously. I also sat on the commission back in November and remember most of the comments and stuff and appreciate all that. But we do have to do our due diligence on what is the law and what is our ability to vote, yea or nay. And so with that being said, I will turn the time over to Commissioner Hatch if you want. Oh, all right.
And I, I just want to make one comment before we go to a motion. Our, our duty as a planning commission with a conditionally use permit is to identify any potentially detrimental effects. And if there are detrimental effects identified, then remedies have to be offered for those detrimental. And if there are detrimental effects identified uh then remedies have to be offered for those detrimental effects. If that has been done, then we have a duty uh as a planning commission to approve the product, the application. So that's where we stand tonight. Uh, the, as far, uh, uh, as far as I'm concerned, as far as I can tell. No, uh, no additional detrimental effects have been identified uh by the comments we've heard tonight. So I think we're ready to proceed to a motion.
Okay, we just want to make sure that we are clear that it is not fifty-six hundred west. On the record. I believe that should be seventy-eight hundred south. Okay. There's two actual motions here, so we'll do the conditional use permit. I moved that the planning commission approved the conditional use permit for a restaurant, fast food, general use for on Carol Way Retail. On approximately point five six acres at twenty-eight seventy-seven west, seventy-eight hundred south. Subject to all the conditions of approval, one through five.
Commissioner Allen?
Second.
All in favor?
I.
Any opposed? The first motion, motion is approved unanimously.
Okay, this will be for the site plan. I move that the planning commission approved the preliminary site plan for Carol Way Retail. A two-tenant fast food building located at twenty-eight seventy-seven west. Seventy-eight hundred south, subject to all the requirements of the approval, including the change on number three.
Motion by Tom, Commissioner Thomas, Commissioner Allen.
Oh. I thought that was on there.
To your motion?
Um, let's, yeah, let's turn it back up a little bit and include the. The restripping. On Carol Way, yeah. Thank you.
We okay there, counsel?
Yeah, and maybe you could just indicate that that's uh.
Number four.
Requirement number four, right?
It will make that number four is the striping on Carol Way.
Then you should probably turn off your mic there. Yep.
Commissioner Allen?
I will second that motion.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Any negative? Motion is approved seven to zero. We will move now to item number four, Jones Landing North sixty-eight thirty-five West New Bingham Highway. Future land use plan amendment for parks and open space to southwest quadrant. Rezone fifty-two point four acres from A twenty agriculture twenty acres. And M one light manufacturer zone to southwest quadrant mixed use zone and master development agreements. Uh, applicant is Gardner Group is uh Ben C Strand here.
All right, good, dual mics here. Do I pick one or just? I'm gonna go for it over here. Don't judge. Um. She's the right. Okay, well, I'm gonna go right then. Um, well, good evening. It's certainly a, a pleasure to be here. Uh, my name is Ben C Strand with the Gardner Group, also representing Mike Jones, who is our, our partner out here on, on this land. We have worked in this area for quite some time. And I think before we get into anything, just like to, you know, really express our gratitude to staff. And everyone who's been involved, kind of helping us get thus, this far. Um, it's been a while since we've. Uh, I've kind of been before you and, and the last time we, we met, we were looking at the southwest quadrant zone itself. Um, and kind of amending that general plan for, and this area, you know, this area was, has really, we tried to take. A high-level macro approach to, to planning this area and wanted to avoid developing, you know, kind of. Where you get a quilt of different uses and, and really try to come up with something that. There's, while there's different uses, how can we best integrate them together and create community and, and something that is going to work? Long-term and not create issues. So all of that being said, that's kind of. Where we're at today is, is southwest quadrant is to try to help us create that area and um. This, this rezone, it, it took us quite a while um to actually get the application in. It, it really was a lot of hard work from everyone on staff. As we thought through, we, there were requirements placed with the southwest quadrant zone that required a high level of detail. We, we found ourselves site planning at points and said, hey, we need to take a step back. We're creating more questions than answers, so. Uh, we, we fully anticipate we're going to be coming back, obviously, with, with site plans and master development agreements, really much more in the nitty gritty. But we're hoping this gives a high-level view of how we plan on integrating uses and how we can provide a, a really strong commercial area that will, will. Um, provide some strong, strong jobs to, to the city, but also. How can we be good neighbors and integrate to the existing community and create some buffering and, and things? So. These things can be symbiotic, but anyway, with that high-level introduction, I really um. Uh, open to answer any questions you have and, and then hopefully after a public comment, I can respond to those as well. Is that all right?
Yes, any questions for the applicant at this point? Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks. I gotta say, it's nice being in the new room as well.
Yes.
Audiovisual looking nice. Okay, thank you.
Taylor?
Great, thank you, Chair. Um, so as mentioned, uh, this is kind of three applications. The first has a future land use amendment. Also a rezone, and because of the zone we're going to, that requires a master development plan and agreement to be adopted prior to the rezone. So here, uh, on the left, we can see what it's currently designated future land use. It's a southwest quadrant, light industrial and park. Uh, with the proposal, the change would go to almost entirely uh southwest quadrant mixed use. We will see there's a, a strip of park. Remaining there. That's because the first phase of their development, they will be constructing a park uh between Echo Ridge and this development. And the current zoning, uh, about most of the project, about ninety percent is currently zoned A twenty. That's agricultural twenty. Acre minimum lots with the bottom section being uh M one, which is our light industrial zone. Uh, they will be rezoning the entire parcel uh to the southwest quadrant mixed use zone, which is kind of tailor-made for this area. Uh, the mix that they're proposing, we can see uh nineteen point two acres of that is anticipated to be. Park and residential, most of that's residential, uh, three hundred and thirty-one uh dwelling units is what's anticipated. So that's about seventeen point four dwelling units per acre. Uh, the remainder thirty-four point two acres would be office warehouse, uh flex space. They're showing actually a section for a, a gas station. Or conveniences as well. Um, and here on the uh right side of the screen, this would be that residential pod. Only, so we can see that it's uh stacked flat buildings. Um, and then on the east side, there's the park, so there's. Uh, some playfields, uh tennis pickleball, you can't do a park, the pickleball anymore. Some top lots, and then they'll have their uh stack flats next to that. And then the parking for the stack flats would actually be interior uh inside that residential development. Uh, we'll, we'll get to it a little bit later, but they're also providing uh a number of parking stalls. It's over seventy. Which would be for exclusive use of the park in addition to meeting the parking demand for the residential development. So they are planning for parking on that public park. Should be noted that the park will be built by them, but then turned over to the city and it will be a public park. So these are just some internal uh road layout maps and walking paths, so. Uh, stuff they've been considering uh pretty intensely. Uh, he mentioned that we've been working on for a while. It's been well over two years. We've been. Kind of working together with Ben on this. One of the biggest concerns that we anticipate getting are traffic concerns from the neighborhood of traffic from. The residential portion of this going to their neighborhoods. The traffic study indicates that that won't be the case. And we've tried to illustrate why the traffic study and our traffic engineer agrees that that won't be the case. Uh, we can see. The residential development here, it's going to have a connection right here to uh New Bingham Highway. Only two real destinations would be going down Ninetieth, getting onto Mountain View Corridor or going to U one eleven. There's nowhere else. That the roads connect to, to go to. And so. It's always quicker to go through this new road they'll be constructing than to do a circuitous path through these existing neighborhoods to go on to some. Existing uh connections. And so the traffic study actually indicates that it's more likely that. Traffic will be pulled from some of those existing neighborhoods out through this new uh development to get to New Bingham Highway. And that's kind of a standard development practice that we'll see is heightened, it gets put out next to the big road, so the. Their traffic doesn't go to the neighbors, but the neighborhood traffic goes through them, and that's what we anticipate being the case in this location as well. Uh, in addition to that, uh, with the southwest quadrant, they don't just use the same development standards that we have with our M one zones. We will see that in their master development plan, they have kind of a pretty uh. Beefy and I'll beefy, but a couple pages of additional design standards that would apply to those. Uh, manufacturing industrial type buildings, and we have examples which we can see here. They've also provided examples of what the uh, the architectural standard would be for the stacked flat project, which they're proposing. Uh, so we can see that on the right side of the screen. The screen on the left, this is the parking and those light two parking, those light blue parking lots were the ones I indicated where. Uh, parking stalls for the public park only, then the dark blue would be the parking spaces for the apartment complex, so. And there's two different public parking uh locations that will be provided for use of that park. Um, that'll be good because some of those playfields would be large enough to host soccer games and youth leagues and stuff, so. We wouldn't say that they will be used. And then uh the right side is just a phasing plan. Uh, so the residential development will come in first two phases. We can see those are the red and the green here. Uh, so red's the first phase, green's the second phase, and then the more industrial and office components will come in the, the future phase. Uh, three. Or they're calling it two. This the context map of where this is and, and in context to the rest of the city. Um, there's a number of road projects which are planned in the future that will uh increase connectivity in the. The long-term, but they're not currently there, including the extension of Ninetieth South and this connection down here, which goes. Out here to all the way to a hundred and two. Uh, so based on the analysis, now you did in the staff report, we are recommending approval of all three applications. Um, happy to answer any questions you might have at this time.
Thank you. Commissioner Thomas?
Just clarification with all of the uh road swapping and stuff is uh the New Bingham Highway, is that a West Jordan? Road or is that a UDOT road?
Currently, uh, New Bingham Highway is a UDOT facility. We are anticipating it being traded to the city in the future, however.
Okay, that's what I thought. I just, I know with the swapping and of roads and stuff, so thank you.
Exactly, thank you.
Commissioner Hatch?
Out of curiosity, where is the Danan site? Where is that in relationship to this residential? I thought I saw it on an earlier slide.
Yeah, right there.
Right there, okay. Okay.
This, this is upwind from Dan.
Upwind, okay. That was actually my question.
Most days.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yeah, I just have a question regarding the park and, and looking at the pictures that you had of the parking lot, it looks like all of those parking lots are captive. To the apartment complex. I'm just curious if that's the case or if there's a more public access for, for the park and specifically for parking for it.
Yeah, so uh first, this northern lot, there'll actually be a road that comes in just south of these water tanks. So that will go right to this public lot right here, and then this road right here is an existing road stub, and so that will continue through. It'll be a private road, but it'll be uh a road stub for a public road at this location through, and so you'll have two different ways to access that.
Okay, so it's not really captive to the apartments at all?
Nope.
Okay, perfect.
Commissioner Hatch?
Reminded me of another question, thank you. Um, who will maintain the parks? Is it West Jordan or is it HOA?
We will maintain the parks as a city.
Thank you.
Commissioner Allen?
I love this line of thinking, questioning. So uh, yeah, two of my questions were already answered. When we're talking parks, though, we're talking both the one on the north uh next to the water tanks and the entire east side of the apartment complexes. So you mentioned soccer's is one of the things that could potentially happen there. I think you said seventy-ish stalls? Am I completely misremembering what you said?
Yeah, so there are seventy exclusive stalls for the park area.
Uh, so I, I'm just thinking from perspective of a soccer game, you get a kid's soccer game going, another one that's going to be showing up. Right on the heels of that one, we're going to be well outside of seventy stalls. Uh, from that perspective, it sounds like they're meeting what the city's requirements are, so I'm not debating that necessarily. If folks were to start parking along the road or uh encroaching into the residential parking area. That's entirely on the apartment complex to work through on the, at least the residential parking area in the city to manage anything that would be off-road.
Correct. I think we have an exhibit. Okay, so we can see the internal private, so that kind of pale blue, that's all privately owned. The, the kind of turquoise is also uh privately owned, so the only public roads are the dark blue, which we can see kind of on the exterior of the project.
So the road along the north that goes to the, only to the park. That one is not going to be a public road?
I don't think that one's actually shown on here, but that will be publicly owned because it's on public property. I think that's how that's working out. And doesn't have any access off of that to their parking lot?
Got it. Okay, that's helpful, thank you.
I have a question or a comment. I'm not sure how this is going to come out. It appears that this uh plan calls for multifamily dwellings. In a minute here, we'll be discussing item number six, which is the balanced housing report. Uh, which says uh currently it would take eighty-five years to reach the desired ratio, so how, how are we supposed to look at? More multifamily dwellings in the face of our balanced housing report that's just way out of balance already.
So southwest quadrant mixed use zone is exempted from the balanced housing ordinance?
Why, why?
Uh, partly is because it's going to be a kind of workforce housing, something they need to provide, but also. Lifecycle, uh, lifestyle housing for different stages, and because it's being mass planned on such a large uh. Scale, I think overall there'll be several thousand acres of southwest quadrant once we're done. Uh, there's a understanding that because of mixing some of those densities. With the intensity of uses that are going to be there, it's just going to be required because uh one of. One of the things we talked about in this project being such a boon is it's providing buffering for that single-family neighborhood, which is out there kind of stranded by itself. Sometimes the family doesn't play nice next to some of the heavier conduct, uh industrial or commercial uses. So you have more dense uses of residential, actually provide a more appropriate buffer and transition. Um, as well as, you know, if we're bringing in thousands of jobs, there will need places for those people to work nearby, otherwise you're creating. Uh, traffic concerns, so the southwest quadrant zone exempts uh itself through the. Balanced housing ordinance.
Commissioner Allen?
I have one more question, it's probably more focused to Duncan, but we'll, we'll let Taylor take a stab at it. We're being asked tonight to approve a master development plan. Not a master development agreement, so we didn't see any legal language or discussion along that line. So what is the difference between the two and what happens moving forward?
Yeah, so this is something that has come up quite a few times. It'll probably come up a few more times in the, the future. The master development agreement will kind of memorialize the master development plan. And that's specifically tailored to be approved by the city council, uh where you provide uh feedback to the council on land use. That's what we're doing with the master development plan. After we know that this meets uh. The future land use designation, then you get okay with the land use. Duncan will do his legal wizardry to make sure that. What's being shown on the plan is legally represented in that master development agreement.
Right, and uh there actually has, there have been drafts of the master development agreement that have been circulated between. Well, among city staff and the, the next draft that will be going probably tomorrow to the developer. They've seen prior iterations. Basically, I mean, at the end of the day, we, here we've got a, what a, approximately, I think it was a hundred and forty-seven page document, the master development. Basically, I mean, at the end of the day, we, here we've got a, what a approximately, I think it was a hundred and forty-seven page document, the master development plan. The development agreement, if you don't count the signature pages, is only about a dozen pages, right? Um, and it basically, that the main attachment uh, to it is the master development plan. So what happens the way it's stated in city code, basically, and, and by practice is. You look at the entirety of the master development plan and staff provides you in the staff report, the key points. That are gonna be in the development agreement. So you don't necessarily see the text of that uh, twelve-page document. But you've seen all the bullet points and um, then as Taylor mentioned, the council does look at the specific language. So it basically. Flushes, they see the hundred and forty-seven page attached development plan and they see the flushed out twelve-page final MDA. That has the bullet points flushed out into specific language. Um, so you don't necessarily see that specific language, but some of that is more policy. Issues, but like I said, you've seen all the main bullet points in the staff report, so it's nothing new. Um, but that's been the, the practice. So uh, when you see master development agreement, it really is master development plan. With the bullet points of the master development agreement that it will be attached to.
Go ahead.
Uh, hopefully this gets picked up. So the follow-up question would be. The master development agreement plan we're looking at now is specific to just this area.
Right, yeah, now that's a really good question because a lot of times you will have a much larger master planned. Area and then, you know, you might have a sub uh, area plan, which is just a, a portion of that overall. In this instance, when we say master development agreement and plan, we're talking for this whole area that's been described. They're both. A combined document dealing with the same o- overall area. It's not part of a bigger master planned. Development, if, if that answers your question. Yeah, and, and in fact, that's why this one is called uh, Jones Landing North as opposed to Jones Landing is there was a prior. Uh, development that already came through a couple of years ago that was the portion just to the. South of this development, so it had its own separate. Master development agreement and plan.
Commissioner Hollinsworth. Yeah, so um, question about the parking again for the residential area. You're anticipating one point four stalls per unit?
Yeah, that's what's provided and i- it's calculated according to our parking standards in our code. Um, that's because. There are not all three bedroom and all two bedroom and all one bedroom. So the parking standard is different for the number of bedrooms each unit has. So in calculating that, that would be the minimum that they need and that's what they are providing.
So what is the mix uh, of residential? Is it gonna be, is it gonna be mostly? Three bedroom, two bedroom, what, what is it gonna be?
So you know, I don't know that exactly off the top of my head. We will actually be bringing a site plan and a subdivision back for the residential and we'll. Get into all those things to make sure and double check all of those things at that point. But at this point, this is anticipated is what we're seeing here, but we will still have to come back through a public process for the reason. Another reason of the site plan and the subdivision for that, where all that parking will be calculated in those unit types.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Hatch.
Thank you. I want to say how much I've appreciated the future tax summary. I don't know if this is a new requirement that we're doing. Um, I don't know where it came from, but I loved seeing that the fiscal impact, how it changes our. What's the revenue to the city, how it builds our funds up. So that's a nice addition to the summary if it's from Gardner, from whomever, but thank you.
That was a request from the city council. The mayor has joined us. Thank you. This item was noticed for public hearing. So we allow open to the public. Sir, it looks like you have something to say. Step to the microphones and state your name, please, and you'll have three minutes.
I'm Joe Rummo. I'm here representing the Echo Ridge HOA board. Uh, so I first want to say thank you all. Appreciate you. I want to reach out to the gardener group, tell them what an amazing group they've been at, working with us on this development. As of course, we're their immediate neighbors right to their east. Uh, it's hard when you hear apartments, everybody starts freaking out. We have an HOA board stepped in and said, you know what? We're gonna make the best of this for both of us. So Commissioner Thomas, you said the. Key thing earlier that I didn't think about this whole day as I was getting ready to talk to you, and that is to mitigate. The one thing I would love to mitigate, if you look up there at your map, I guess depending on which direction you're at, it'd be on your right. There is a private internal road that is actually going to run through the neighborhood there into Echo into the park. Now, a couple of things we wanted to ask and look at, and they have been more than willing to work with us, but we were told the city said absolutely not. We want to see if we could possibly shut that road down. Now let me explain why. Number one, putting a roadway right in the middle of a park, well, you said it exactly, seventy kids getting dropped off, jumped into soccer games during all that. Was a big factor to us. Two is we are parking cars straight in there with a pull-through with kiddos there. And three, we have walking paths to go right over there. So I understand we can't cut all the roads down, but. As somebody said earlier, it wouldn't affect much traffic anyway. That was exactly what was stated about that road. So can we look at possibly shutting, and I believe it is ninety-five, forty, south, just shut that road off? Yes, we'll still keep the parking there, still public, we'll still have three ways to get into that park and three ways to get out. But we cut down on, to make the safety factor. Cars aren't going in and out of it. Cars aren't going through it. And again, when we originally showed this plan about a year and a half ago, we were shown that that was just a park. A whole park strip there. We were excited, we were happy until we heard they wanted to run a road through the middle of a park. So. That's all I got. I'm asking you guys if you will all consider, again, thank you for service. Our consider is simply this. Safety for everybody. That's not just our kids, that's all kids and all people walking through and enjoying our new park. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience? Anybody online? Raise your hand. Zachary Pendleton.
Yeah, my name's Zachary Pendleton. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, great. Um, so I'm a resident of Echo Ridge as well with Joe. Um, and I reside ninety-five forty-two Echo Ridge Drive. I share the, the same appreciation to Gardner um, for their efforts to get our feedback through this process. For those of you that know the background of our neighborhood, I think there was a false start and. Um, we had a number of, you know, over a hundred and thirty homes developed. Um, with the expectation that there would be more in the future and somewhere along the line, that didn't happen, which has created. Our neighborhood to be as it's documented in, in even this document on an island. Um, so I do appreciate the development group coming to us and recognizing that. Um, and offering to, you know, provide a park when the, the plans or the, the potential development could be very different. Um, the other, the other thing I want to mention that I share with, with Joe is the concern about ninety-five forty south. Um, in twenty twenty-three, when we heard about what this was going to be and began to see some renderings, we, we saw. Um, you know, that there could potentially be a road that would be there. Um, at ninety-five forty coming out of our, out of our neighborhood. And you need to take it, you need to realize that the reason that that stub road is there is because. There were, you know, possible plans or the potential. To have more of a neighborhood to the west of Echo Ridge that just never happened. It never materialized for whatever reason. And so the, the entire reason that that stub road is there is for, you know, future, future neighborhood that was supposed to happen. To the north of us, there is another apartment complex called Willshire. And Willshire um, does not have an egress or ingress, you know, entrance or exit into our neighborhood. Though we're butted up against each other. And so I would ask that whatever could be done um, with ninety-five forty south, that it not. Be either an entrance into the park or an entrance into the apartment complex, just because. It's, it's going to create traffic into our neighborhood that should have never been intended. And, you know, whether it's for soccer games or apartment complex residents, um, there's going to be an impact there. To our neighborhood, um, where, you know, I don't think that that was ever intended, even though there's a stub road there.
Thank you. Anybody else online? Raise your hand. Mister C Strand, would you like to respond to the comments? Public hearing is now closed. Mister C Strand, would you like to respond?
Thank you. Um, yeah, I would just like to, I mean, thank Joe and Zach and the Echo Ridge. They've been fantastic. As we've kind of tried to brainstorm with them and, and address concerns. We, we understand where they're coming from and frankly, we're, we're open to problem solving. I think working with city staff, understanding. Why, you know, there's definitely opinions that an access would be beneficial and down the road, they may appreciate having an access there to the park. For vehicles, but um, we're really, w- we will do, as we site plan this out, we'll do whatever is. Kind of asked of us to do. We're, we're, we're good either way.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Commissioners, additional questions and comments? Commissioner Roberts?
I just have another question about parking for the park and that specifically that ninety-five forty South Street. And that is, is that uh, the subdivision in the HOA? Are those roads owned by the city or by the HOA?
Yeah, those roads are being shown as private.
Okay.
Oh, sorry. Uh, I, I thought, thought you're talking about the ones inside the. Sorry, yes, yes. The existing roads are, are public. The proposed ones inside the uh, apartment complex will be private.
Okay, yeah, that's, I, I'm just concerned with the, the concept of, of the city taking on responsibility for a park that on both sides would. Would be blockaded by private roads.
The road would have of kind of larger right of way. It would really try to, you know, i- it would. Probably promote more traffic. So we were trying to, by making it private, reduce that right of way, reduce speed limits, make it feel much more. Part of the community and part of a. So, so it tries to lessen the impact of that traffic on the neighborhood if it did go through. So that's the reason it's, I know, I understand it's a little. Outside of the norm, but that's why that show was a private road.
Commissioner Allen? I, I'd just like to hear from staff. Uh, is it, to what extent is it? Uh, true that we as a city are requiring that connection?
Yeah, it's a hundred percent. The city wanted that connection.
And you walk through the process as to why?
Uh, so there's a number of reasons. Emergency response is always better when you have connections. Also. Uh, he mentioned the other apartment complex, which didn't have a connection to a residential neighborhood next to it. And in my opinion, that's bad planning to have neighborhoods which don't have connections between them. So we want to bring them together. That also. Uh, is conducive to um, active transportation and walking if you have those connections. So. That's why you're proposing that.
So, um, gonna make a statement and, and either back this up or completely correct me. I'm perfectly fine either way. The three motions that we're making tonight don't really have to do with that road or the site plans or how this thing is gonna be set up. We'll have those conversations later.
Absolutely.
That is a big concern for me for a number of reasons. So we can talk about those, of course, at that later time, but. Otherwise, I think this looks great. It's, it's an exciting uh, update and I think just like this last one, we've got a willing partner. That is interested in, in uh, building into this. So, great, kudos. I guess I can make a motion if nobody else wants to.
Commissioner Allen.
All right, three motions. Uh, first one. I move that the planning commission recommend approval of the general map, general plan map amendments. Changing the designation for fifty-three point four acres of Jones Landing North from light industrial and future park to Southwest quadrant. Subject to all requirements of approval.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded by Commissioner Helen, Allen and Commissioner Hatch. All in favor? Any opposed? First motion passes seven to zero. Next?
I move that the planning commission recommend approval of master development agreement, subject to all requirements of approval.
I'll second that.
Motion and seconds. All in favor? Any opposed? That motion passes seven to zero. Commissioner Allen?
I move that the planning commission recommend approval of the rezon of fifty-three point four acres from agricultural twenty acre minimum lots, A twenty. And light manufacturing M one to Southwest quadrant mixed use, S W Q M U zone, subject to all requirements of approval.
Commissioner Hatch.
I will second that.
Motion and second. All, all in favor? Any opposed? Seven to zero. Thank you. We move on now to item five. Proposed amendments to the planning commission bylaws and rules of procedure. Who's talking about this one?
I guess that would be me. So this is. Something that we look at occasionally. The bylaws themselves recommend that we look at them. For potential updates once a year, not that we have to make updates once a year, but that you as a planning commission can consider. If you need any changes and then looking at them. This, in this instance, however, this is obviously not initiated by you as the planning commission, more. Uh, initiated by staff. And uh, and perhaps maybe in particular mostly me, but uh, but some other staff as well. What my thought pattern was, was twofold. Firstly, um, because of amendments over the, over time, I've been here close to eight years and. We've had different amendments here and there. And, and the one thing is, is when you have. Amendments each focused on a very specific part of the bylaws. And then totality maybe that we don't have exactly the, the same definitions or use of consistent use of terms, that kind of thing. So the first of two things that I was trying to accomplish was to come up with some uniform definitions and. Um, consistent terms so that as you go through the bylaws, those words mean the same thing every time. That's easier to read and that kind of thing. Uh, the second of two things I was looking at and really the main reason why I'm recommending that you. Look at these potential changes and it's the substantive changes which are primarily. Uh, on page. Eight, up to the very top of page nine. Um, and they're dealing with the issues of uh, tie votes and failed votes, right? And uh, because it does create kind of a quandary sometimes is how does the application move forward? Where does it go? Uh, is there a default to, you know, and, and so this is. One possible way of resolving it, the way I've written. And then the reason why I think you should probably take two meetings instead of just today. Is my stab at what I think potentially, and I've bounced it off of other staff and. Uh, no one seems to have any major concerns with it, but again, these are your rules, right? They're your bylaws. And I don't want you to feel like just because I created a mechanism of what could happen if there's a tie vote. Or if there's a failed vote. I'm merely stating that you should have some rule that's clear what happens and. And then put it in the bylaws so that we have a way to know it in the future if there's a tie vote. Or failed vote, what happens, right? Because the, the one underlying thought is, which is clear under Roberts Rules of Order and most sets of, of uh, rules of procedure. Is that a failed vote doesn't accomplish anything, right? Doesn't take any action. We're so used to. In like elections where we're voting in the public for uh, between, say, two candidates on a general election ballot or. On an issue of a bond, should the school uh, district be allowed to? Uh, put forth a bond for, to build two new schools. And then, and there's a binary choice, right? It's yes or no, or it's. Bob Smith or Jane Doe. And you either vote for one or the other, and what's guaranteed is somebody wins, right? And somebody loses. But that's not what happens with typically uh, in most cities on. When it comes to an application that's before you, you, whether you're the final decision maker as a land use authority or whether you're. as a land use authority, or whether you're recommending to the council a failed vote that doesn't pass, does nothing. So the binary choice is when you're voting on a motion, does that motion pass and do something? Or be not pass and does nothing, right? So that's not a choice between two actions. It's a choice between an action and a non-action. And if there's a non-action, you've not done anything. And then so that would require or would suggest that it's a good idea, at least that you make a new motion that does do something, right? And so I even put in on the top of page nine on the proposed rules, an example, right, where a motion is made to send a positive recommendation to the city council for a zone change and it fails three to four, right, which did nothing. That was the no action option. And then since no action was taken by the failed vote and the planning commission, another planning commission member or some could make a motion, a new motion to send a negative recommendation to the city council for the zone change. Presumably that would pass four to three, right? Unless somebody changed their mind in the intervening minute or two. Or if the motion was stated differently or, or whatever. But that's, so that's kind of the, the part of what my suggestion is, is when it's a legislative action in particular, right? You give, you want to move something forward to the council. You know, take a stab, especially if there's an odd number of people, presumably you could make a different motion that would send a positive recommendation to the council. The part that's problematic with say tie votes however, is that you don't have a way sometimes to break the deadlock, right? If it's three to three, it's three to three. And again, unless somebody changes their mind or if the motion is worked differently or, or whatever, then nothing moves forward, right? But there is always the opportunity that at the next meeting, you will have seven people or maybe there's only five people or maybe in the intervening two weeks, somebody's had a different thought or whatever. So tie votes are a little different, especially in the context of a conditional use permit where you don't want a default denial because it's clear under state law that's, and it was stated earlier in our meeting, uh, one of the issues yet on the agenda, that if there's a way to impose reasonable conditions that do mitigate the identified detrimental effects, you have a duty to approve the item, right? With those reasonable conditions. And the only way you can deny a conditional use permit is to go through an analysis and identify the detrimental effects and, and look at all the possible condition, conditions and then reach the conclusion of wow, there's just none of these conditions sufficient enough or even a group of conditions to adequately mitigate, mitigate the detrimental effects and therefore it needs to be denied, which is very, very rare, right? You might go a whole career and, and you know, as a, if somebody's a planner or you might go probably go a whole, you know, couple of terms as a planning commission member and never see that, right? There are possibilities of where it could happen, but it's super rare. So with those thoughts in mind, that's how I came up with the rules for tie votes other than for a conditional use permit. Or unless you make a procedural motion, hey, let's give it until the next meeting, let's table it to the next meeting or, or a certain date or whatever, then the default is you've denied it, right? Or you've sent a negative recommendation to the council or whatever. Except for if you, like you say, make a procedural motion, make a different motion. Or if it's a conditional use permit, it's not a default denial or negative recommendation. It's an automatic default, kick it to the next meeting, right? So that's one way of dealing with it. Like I say, you might choose to do something a little differently. Doesn't have to be that way. I just am recommending that you have some kind of a default. If this, then that happens. If that, then this happens. So that if we're in a situation where someone argues that for some reason you haven't acted appropriately, you can point to the rule and say, we followed the rule. That's the rule we had on that date. That's what we did. And it still provide you with some flexibility, right? And you don't want just an automatic default. You want some flexibility maybe. Which at a minimum, your flexibility is table it to the next meeting. And then like I say, with failed motions, the encouragement there is to just make the opposite motion. Cause clearly if it's not a tie, there should be a way to frame a motion in the opposite context or whatever it might be to make it pass, right? So at any rate, that's kind of what I had in mind. Like I say, it's not set on the agenda for action. Today, that would be next time that you can consider and, and or take action, you know, at the next meeting. But do you have any questions for me now? Or do you have any discussion amongst yourselves as to thoughts? And again, you don't have to decide anything today, but yeah, just let me know what you think.
Commissioner Roberts?
So a question with regard to the benefit of the, doing inverse on the motion. It seems that tonight there were some comments made about the fact that, that the motion failed at the November meeting for the fast food and, but then the alternative motion also failed or, or didn't gain a second. And by doing so, it enabled them to come back and re-present tonight rather than to have to file an appeal. So is there a benefit to not promoting the inverse motion in that circumstance? Cause, because it enabled them to more efficiently resolve the issue and come back? Or am I misunderstanding something there?
I, yeah, no, those are all good questions. And the extra one, I'll start by adding in an extra question. The extra question would be, is it better to resolve a situation where there's no motion that was approved? You know, they were all failed motions, like you said. Is there an advantage to having that come back on your agenda quicker? Sooner rather than later, right? And, and that's why there's one option, like I say, if it was a tie vote, it, it condition is prevent automatically comes back on the next agenda. If it's a situation where it was just a failed vote and not a tied vote, then you know, you're encouraged to make that new motion. So I, I think, you know, there are just those times where you don't have enough information, right? And, and I, and I think what was neat about the, the issue that you had on the agenda earlier this evening was in the intervening time, you did receive additional information, right? There was some negotiating going on between the applicant and the HOA board, if I understand correctly. And then also our traffic engineer came up with some additional data and information suggestions and so forth. And that allowed for you to hear all that and make a decision. So, so the other thought is sometimes you can't make a decision maybe at the next meeting, right? A tie vote's easier because like, yeah, we just need a seventh person, maybe break the tie. But there are times when you realize, wow, you know, maybe we need a few weeks to get some more information. I remember there was a reception center application a couple of years ago and, and that you needed more information, even though you had a lot of information. And so, you know, I'm not saying that necessarily every time you reach a tide voter or a failed motion inability to get an approved motion that you automatically kick it to the next meeting. There might be instances and that's where I left the option, even though there's defaults here that you can always make a procedural motion to do something else. Your procedural motion might be, wow, we need more information. We want to hear from the traffic engineer. We want to see if the applicant can work with the nearby corners association or, or landowner or whatever. Let's table it to a date uncertain or at least, you know, or whatever. Let's shoot for this date and see if we're there. Cause maybe you realize it's going to take at least six weeks or a couple of months or whatever. So I think you have to be cognizant of that too. So that's why a part of my thought as I went through these recommendations or initial suggestions is you can't think of every eventual, possible eventuality, but what you can do is leave yourself some flexibility to deal with whatever happens, right? And, and now I gotta make sure I'm responsive to your questions, but you were basically saying in that instance, what else could you have done, right?
I guess, what I might have misunderstood is suppose that we had had a second on the motion to deny and that had passed. Somebody had mentioned the, the reality of that requiring the petitioner to go through an appeals process. And so I'm curious if in that circumstance, doing nothing and tabling it for a couple of months was actually better than denying it.
I, I agree. And especially like I say, it's very problematic with the conditional use to table, I mean, to deny the conditional use unless you've gone through the exhaustive analysis of trying every possible condition and proving on the record that none of those would work. The challenge you had is you probably didn't have enough information to reach that conclusion, right? And so ironically, despite having maybe the most concise rules, I believe that perhaps the best result happens, right? I think what I'm saying is more ideally, what would have occurred is that we had some rules in place that encouraged you to make the procedural motion to do what actually happened, right? Maybe somebody makes a motion to table until such time or maybe, and maybe given not to exceed ninety days or three months, but and allow the time for the applicant to come back. And I think it was with it about ninety days anyway, right? Wasn't that end of November or something? And now we're here in February. I don't know. But then you're more in control and then it doesn't get lost because what would be a weird limbo type thing would be is we get to a hundred and twenty days after and nobody even remembers that technically that's still open, right? But if we've, if you've passed a procedural motion, then at least we know what we're doing, what's possible. And then everybody is aware of what's happened and what the, you know, what they need to do by what day and so forth.
Well, Mr. Murray, what I'm hearing from Mr. Murray is that it's always better to provide clarity. This, this limbo was, was kind of interesting for staff to kind of wrestle through. And gratefully, we had an applicant that decided to move forward and, 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 and force the question. It could, they could have just let it linger and that, that posed some other, other challenges that we might've had to have addressed, but I think the direction that, that is drafted is to provide a little bit of clarity and certainty, some closure on the issue instead of just it floating out there.
Yeah, Mr. Langford said that much more succinctly than, than I was attempting to do. But I love that, that thought of clarity, right? That is really what I was trying to say. And, and it's clarity to everybody, right? It's clarity to the applicant. In all fairness to him, okay, I got ninety days or whatever to work something out, come back. It's clarity to staff. So it's like, are we acting outside of the scope of what we're supposed? Nope. Plan commission said we had ninety days for it with the applicant. We know exactly what, what's going. It's clarity to the public. So the public shouldn't be surprised. Well, wait a minute, why is that coming back? Well, oh yeah, it's within ninety days. That's what they said. So yeah, I think clarity to everybody is, is good.
Commissioner Thomas was up first, I think.
Yeah. Going back to what we were discussing and, and that case or item that we spoke of earlier on Carroll Way. And that's a really good example of where an inability to come across anything. I don't, a few of us were at that meeting and we did, basically came across an impasse. And I, it's true. I mean, basically we couldn't agree or we couldn't get the motion set in motion, but if we have the clarity where it's a negative, and this is my, kind of my concern, with the applicants and their ability to, once it's been denied, they have to go through the whole process of reapplying and the cost and everything. That sometimes can be prohibitive, especially on a small business. And I'm looking at it this way. Yeah, we should have probably either just said, okay, we're going to table it to a specific date. Because my understanding, we still have that timeline where we have to complete that application or it automatically fails or whatever, but so I'm a little leery about saying, okay, this is what is absolutely. When we talked in November, and I know there's four, four of us that were there, we probably should have made a motion to table it to another date. And I don't disagree with that. I think that would probably would have been the best thing, but where we've got the, okay, if it fails and it's or if it's tie, it's failed. I, I kind of get a little concerned about that. Just my two cents.
Commissioner Hatch?
My question is on, just another weird question. Public comment, since we had it the first time, why was it required the second time it came before us?
You know, that's the, the what's, what I usually think the answer to that question is just based on case law. I can't point to a specific section in Ludmer or elsewhere in the state code. But for me is, is if the application and the key elements of what's happening are virtually identical or substantially close, legally you don't have to have a public hearing. If it's substantially different, even if it's not legally required, probably a really good idea to have another public hearing or sometimes the other question we ask is, is there a significant passage of time, right? In this instance, ninety days out. And the other litmus test that I was referring to that I just think is a good practice, you know, good practice tip. Because there are some new proposed solutions from city staff and also by agreement, so to speak, between the applicant nearby HOA. I think it's one of those things, it never hurts to err on the side of more due process, like we were talking about Open Public Meetings Act. Nobody's ever going to get mad at us that, well, no fair. You gave the public too much additional information on the changes after the passage of time. I mean, at some point we could overdo it, but I think in the circumstances here, it was, it was the, the right thing to do. Can I say with absolute certainty that it was a hundred percent legally required? No. But was it a dang good idea and a good practice? Yeah.
But could we have made the requests that had to be new items? I mean, because they just regurgitated what they had discussed previously. And those were had already been addressed by the applicant. And it just seemed to me like it's, I mean, it was not futile in their part, but it, it wasn't necessary.
No, good point. Well taken. And yeah, maybe if we have a situation like this, again, maybe they could be encouraged to do just a really quick synopsis and focus the vast majority of their time on what's new and what's changed and, and make it clear, you know? I, but I, I think that was all in there, right? But maybe like you say, less time on the old stuff and more time on that new stuff, but no, good point. And I don't think that necessarily has to be in your rules. That might be more the just staff reminding them before they present.
Commissioner Allen?
First, thank you for putting some language in there that makes so that Commissioner Lynn doesn't have to be as awkward as I am in the first meeting of next year. And he can just step down, allow the next people to take over. And they may not. Start thinking about that, everybody else at the table. On this Carroll Way, and perhaps I'm misremembering which we talked about, but I recall asking the applicant very directly if they were willing to allow us to table it to a future meeting. And their response was, no, we'd like an answer tonight. Now, we didn't give him an answer that night either. But I do absolutely agree that it opened up a door for them. I like the ninety day clause. I think it's a great idea. Perhaps a a marriage between that where we say it will be tabled for a maximum of ninety days or tabled up to ninety days without additional action from the planning commission. At which time the, it will be considered denied. Or something to that effect where we've got, it gives them some time. Maybe it gives the applicant an opportunity to go back, think through their process like they did here. And, and come back with some other ideas, not having to pay all those additional fees and go through the process again. It, it seems to me like it's a good compromise between the two.
So as I understand it, you're not asking us for any action? So as I understand it, you're not asking us for any action tonight? This is to be actionable and perhaps at the next meeting?
Right, but my thought was if there was something immediately obvious to you that isn't workable and what I put forth here, may as well tell me now, rather than waiting a couple of weeks, right? This is your opportunity if you see something, because then I've got a better chance to work with staff again and bounce it around everybody with some changes that I'm already anticipating that you want, right? Because it's kind of hard to draft changes on the fly unless they're really simple and easy. But if like, there's something that's like, you know, you look at that and go, no, that's just not what I want to do. If there's a tie vote, or that's just not what I want to do. If there's a failed motion, happy to make a change, so. Yeah. Every once in a while, I draft something that doesn't make a hundred percent sense, but hopefully not this time. Have I had the same problem, so.
I think you've heard our comments. Looked like you're about to push a button.
I don't, I've read through it. I think it reads wonderfully. I can't believe we can still find changes after how many times this document has been modified. But I mean, I think you've covered it, all of the little ticky tacky stuff, as well as the substantial stuff very well.
Commissioner Roberts?
So yeah, just a question in regards to what you were just talking about Duncan. Is it possible for us to draft a rule that says that in the event of a tied vote or a failed vote, we immediately roll to a motion that does present a binary choice between either continuing or denying? Is that, is that something that's possible?
Yeah, so I can propose language there like an option B that says that. So instead of what you're saying, if I repeat back, is instead of the way it's drafted in this option A, so to speak, that's in front of you, that's what I'll call it. Option B would be different in that you don't have to make a procedural motion. The default is a choice between continuing to the next meeting or denying it, right? That's the automatic thing that occurs, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, so, so basically, instead of presenting it in the string of new motions, it would present a default of, do we continue it or do we deny it?
Right, okay, yeah, I'll draft it that way as well.
These very bylaws that we are talking about suggest that after ninety minutes of meeting, we can take a ten minute break. On the other hand, we only have one item left.
And I'll be freaky fast like Jimmy Jones.
Like to proceed with Mr. Gardner proceeding very fast?
Okay, go ahead, Larry.
Okay, for information purposes, for probably, probably the three new members of the planning commission, but maybe the entire planning commission. So the balance, balanced housing ordinance was approved by the city council in 2013, and that was in response to after the crash of 2008, for lack of a better, whatever to call it, housing of all types took a massive downturn for four years, three or four years, maybe four or five years. Hardly any applications, hardly any projects. And then in 2012, there was a a slew of multifamily projects that came into the city all at once, very large projects, five hundred unit, three hundred unit projects, several of them. So the city council at that time wanted to control, they didn't want to have more multifamily projects come in that weren't in the place that the city council felt they were appropriate. And so with that, an ordinance was passed, it was called a cap and grade ordinance at that time, but then a few years back, it was changed to the more appropriate name of balanced housing. And the purpose of the balanced housing ordinance is to more even out the percentage of housing, single family ratio to multifamily to a seventy-seven percent, twenty-three percent multifamily ratio, the seventy-seven percent being single family. And that was, of course, a goal in the 2012 general plan. And so the takeaway is that it was wanting to control more where multifamily goes in the city, so it just doesn't, we don't end up with five acre townhome projects here, larger apartment complexes there, that type of thing. And so with that being said, the control also had to put some exemptions into the ordinance, because for the city to just out and out ban multifamily housing, we'll probably have got the ire of lawmakers on the back of Western City, for lack of a better word, I don't know. Scott, you might have a better way of putting it than that. And so, you know, with that, there were some exemptions put into the the multifamily, and some of the exemptions, of course, were made sense, because you want, as you can see, multifamily around transit stations, you know, around the Jordan Valley Station, and at the city center across the street. That's where you want your multifamily housing, that's close to arterial streets, close to a mass transit. Senior housing overlay, and then plus low to moderate income housing, that was put in there just to follow federal fair housing, because you can't, you can't exempt classes of people from housing. And then over the years, some exemptions have come in, this, the interchange overlay zone, residential overlay district, the integrated housing zone, that type of thing have been, so exemptions from the multifamily in the southwest quadrant was one that was mentioned tonight. But the council also felt that if the development was large enough, over seventy-five acres, that as long as it was limited to seventeen percent of seventeen percent of the housing of that development, that, that would be a good place to, to put multifamily housing. So those are the exemptions in the ordinance. And so each year, by ordinance, the balanced housing requires that it be published on the website, the ratio, so if there's someone interested in developing multifamily housing, they can go to our website and look at where we're at as far as the ability to develop more multifamily housing. And we like to every year give the planning commission an update on where we're at. And so 2023 was not a banner year for single family housing permits in West Jordan or in Salt Lake County, and that was for a lot of reasons, interest rates mostly. And interest rates on top of a very costly real estate market right now. And so, and you know, the past that knows, seven, eight years, we've been pushing the three hundred level of single family starts. You can see we have eighty-four new homes in 2023. So probably not, less than, you know, a third of what we've been doing in the past. And housing has become very expensive. I'm not going to go over that, because you hear that every day if you watch the news, what a housing crisis we're in. And then 242 new multifamily units were approved in 2023. And I can tell you, those were entirely in one development called Park Valley behind the Smiths on 5600 West. One development. So that was placed in a very specific location, because it's part of a large master bond development, and it was where they felt it would be, it's also in a commercial area close to arterial, to arterial streets, seventy eight hundred south, fifty-six hundred west. And so with the single family homes in West Jordan, with the eighty-four, we have twenty-seven thousand five hundred and forty-three single family homes. And the two forty-two, that brings Western City up to ten thousand three hundred and sixty-five homes. And so the formula, I'm not going to go through, it's in the ordinance. But anyway, as, as Commissioner Nguyen pointed out, to reach the balance, if we're just doing eighty-four homes a year, it'll take us eighty-five years to get there. However, I will think, however, I do remember when the balanced housing ordinance was first passed over ten years ago to reach the percentage or the ratio was a little over two hundred years. And so it has been working, you know, I'm not saying that the balanced housing is a perfect tool, but is a tool that has controlled the placement of multifamily where the planning commission and city council wanted to go. And keeping Western primarily a single family residential community. Do you have any questions for me on the balanced housing? You're shaking your head no?
Thank you.
Oh, okay. So there's no motion on this, you can just take a moment to read it before you go, you know, it'll keep, you know, it'll keep you awake.
Thank you, Larry. Commissioner Thomas?
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
We are adjourned. We meet again on March fifth, correct?
March fifth, the meeting that coincided.
Oh, yeah.